I'll also be chairing the council meeting. And it is 9:07 and I'll call our work session to order. We have a quorum meeting virtually. The first, we should be a pretty short work session. We have, I think, two pooled items and then we have the COVID briefing, which we will start with. City manager, did you want to say anything before the briefing?
Sure, Mayor Protem, council members, good morning. We just have the one briefing, as the Mayor Protem mentioned, on COVID-19. Well, with your permission, we're going to have Director Hayden start off the briefing. We'll turn it over to Dr. Eskot and then we'll pause for questions. Let Dr. Eskot go to Commissioner's Court. And then we have Bella Carmen, our interim homeless strategy officer, to talk about protective lodges at your request after that. But with that, I'll ask Director Hayden to start off this briefing. Dr. Hayden?
Good morning. Thank you, Spencer. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well today. I want to start out by talking about the work that our epidemiologists, our surveillance team, as well as additional support. We have identified early on and continue to focus to support the schools, higher education, long-term care. And then there are some other non-nursing home sites that we are providing additional support to. Our teams work very closely with the schools to provide additional services to them. We are hosting a weekly call. At this point, it's about 50 members that are attending that meeting. Dr. Eskot meets weekly with the superintendents as well. And so that allows us to make sure that we are receiving quick, accurate information about what's happening in our schools, as well as our long-term care facilities. Our staff have worked with our schools to... On the TEA has put together the Rapid Antigen Testing Project. And so we are providing guidance on that test. And our goal is to ensure that things are aligned and we have consistency. As you know, we currently have about 1,000 Bynix Rapid Antigen Tests. And we're going to work with the schools to provide that testing. And just as a reminder, we have selected Title I schools in Travis County to focus on. The other thing, as we move along this process, is we're going to find, we found that it is important for us to put together a document when to quarantine. And so this is a guidance document that we put in place for schools and childcare. And it will be used by our nurses. So when any individual calls our nurse line, our staff will be able to refer back to that document. As you may recall, our team put together an interim guidance on reopening schools. And so since it is an interim guidance, we know that as we move along and things change, we do need to make some changes to that document. And so our team is working on updating that interim guidance on reopening schools. We are continuing to conduct investigations and provide technical assistance to other businesses and other entities in the community whenever we determine that they may have a cluster, which is three or more cases at that site. On Friday, the 6th, our Vaccine Coalition Meeting met. And as you may recall, we have over 100 people that attend that meeting. And so within the group of folks that are attending is healthcare providers. We have community, nonprofit agencies. But it is actually a regional meeting. So we have partners from Hayes County, Williamson County, and Bastrop County that are attending, as well as members from state health services. And so as we really plan within the MSA, it's important for us to be able to decide and think about what are going to be our priority populations. And so that meeting particularly focused on priority populations. And we are also looking at subgroups within the population. Knowing that initially, when we receive the vaccine, we are anticipating it to be a smaller allocation. And so knowing that it may be a smaller allocation, even though priority populations will have already been identified at a high level from the Centers for Disease Control, it's important for communities to be able to drill down a little further to get those subgroups within the priority groups. We are working very closely with the Texas Department of Health Services with guidance from the Centers for Disease Control. And so we are a part of Operation Warp Speed. And so that was one of the reasons why we put together the Coalition. The department has weekly meetings with state health services. And we are reviewing webinars weekly about the vaccine distribution. And so the state did inform us last week that the phases have changed a little bit. As you know, the state came out with a plan on October 16th. And initially, they were anticipating Phase 1 of the plan would start in November. So they've changed that to say November is a planning month and anticipating that December could potentially, and this is all subject to change, that that would be the month for the first phase of their plan. Right now, we have over 75 providers that are registered with the state to provide vaccine in our community. And so that's really good news for us. And our hope is, is that during this planning time, we have more providers that will agree to provide the vaccine in our community. As a reminder, we are continuing to provide walk-up sites, Dove Springs, Givens, Montopolas, and in the Rumberg Community at Walnut Creek Library. We have our drive-up site at St. John's. At all of these locations, we have day, evening, and weekend hours. And so if you have folks that have had an exposure to someone that maybe may have tested positive or have any symptoms, please ask them to either go onto our website or if they don't have access to the internet, to call our nurse line. And then lastly, we are continuing to do at-home testing that is still available to our community. I want to switch and start talking about long-term care. That incident management team, over the last 14 days, we've seen 18 new cases at our long-term care facilities. Most of those cases have occurred amongst staff. And so what our staff are doing is, is that we are providing the PPE to them and making sure that we send out enough for the facilities to have. To date, we've placed an additional 269 PPE orders. And one of the things, our staff continues to meet with the team of individuals that are calling in from the long-term care facilities. They meet weekly. And so discussion was held about providing PPE kits for the essential workers. And so what our team is going to be working on is putting together some kits with reusable fabric face masks, as well as hand sanitizer. And then encourage the facilities to just provide these to their employees. Because overall, we want to be able to keep everyone as safe as possible. We are continuing to partner at the social service branch. We are providing PPE in our community. And we are also partnering with individuals throughout the community. So whether it is a combination of they're providing food assistance, PPE, flu shots, those are the things that we are partnering with individuals to do. This past weekend, we had an exercise. And it was a, we provided flu vaccine. To almost 500 doses were provided. And so it was at the expo and then so it was a drive-through. And so we, we really, it was overall success. It was a great success. And so we could definitely use what we learned from that exercise, as well as an exercise that we did on the 24th of October. And so these are the kind of exercises that when the vaccine is here, we can just move into a place of providing the vaccine throughout the community when it is widely available. Our long-term care folks continue to test and offer that to our long-term care folks. And HHSC is requiring a testing strategy for all of the long-term care facilities. And so our staff have just kind of let them know we are there as a support. With the COVID-19 vaccine, our long-term care partners have signed on with, directly with CVS and Walgreens for the administration of the COVID-19 vaccine. And so that, the last day to sign up was this past Friday. And so that way, it puts a priority population that we know definitely will need the vaccine, they will be provided through CVS and Walgreens. If we had any partners that were not able to connect, then we're going to follow up with them and see how we can fill in the gap. We continue to, with our homeless update, we continue to provide the Eating Apart Together Initiative for people experiencing homelessness. That program is really moving along quite well. We've had some really good partners that have provided feedback to us about, you know, how the program is just really helping so many people. But our ISOFAC and Protective Lodges, definitely, if folks are in need to isolate or quarantine, we definitely invite them to go to the ISOFAC. With our five Protective Lodges, we have just a little bit under 300 guests. All five of the Protective Lodges, over the last couple of weeks, we provided flu clinics at all of them. And so our staff were able to provide the flu vaccine to them. We are continuing to work with flu clinics this week at the Arch and Salvation Army Shelters and Sunrise Homeless Navigation Center. Next week, we will be providing flu shots at Tarazza's Library. I am so excited that the team is continuing to make progress. As of today, 63 individuals have transitioned to permanent housing, which is wonderful. Our team are just working, you know, really, really hard to transition the folks out to permanent housing. Lastly, with the childcare, staff are continuing to provide additional support. And we've identified initially seven zip codes and then we've spread out a little more to some additional zip codes. We are continuing to distribute health and safety supplies to childcare providers that indicate they have a need. We continue to have our info lines open for long-term care for schools, as well as childcare. So they can receive the additional support that we have. That concludes my presentation. I will transition over to Dr. Eskot. Dr. Eskot?
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll ask AV to pull up my slides. There we go. Next slide, please. Mayor Protem and Council, thanks for the opportunity to update you all on our current COVID-19 situation. Unfortunately, the past couple of weeks have brought us a worsening situation. This graph is showing us the new cases diagnosed in Travis County. Yesterday, we reported the highest number since September of 214 new cases, which gives us a moving average of 154. Our low after our initial surge was on October the 4th, which was 64 cases on the moving average. So we are up 140% in a little over a month and 60% in the past week. So a significantly worsening situation here in Travis County from COVID-19 transmission. Next slide, please. Now, this graph is showing us the new admissions to the hospital. Yesterday, we reported 24 new admissions with a moving average of 26. Again, this has more than doubled our low that we encountered on October the 4th following our initial surge. That number on the 4th of October was 12. So again, more than double over the past 30 days. And you can see, similar to our case numbers, that the past week to 10 days have brought a significant increase in a relatively short period of time. Next slide, please. Again, this graph is showing us the, in blue, the hospital beds being utilized for COVID-19, the orange ICU beds, and the gray ventilators. The hospitalization number yesterday was 140 with a moving average of 132. Our low following the initial surge was again on October the 4th with a moving average of 77, so a 71% increase in a little over a month for our hospital utilization. Our ICU beds yesterday, 45 with a moving average of 46. Again, more than double the low that we had on October the 2nd of '22. So again, all of the measures that we currently have related to COVID-19, including the admissions, the new cases, hospital beds, ICU bed utilization, are all pointing to the fact that things are worsening here, similar to what's happening in other jurisdictions around the state and certainly around the country. Next slide, please. So this morning, I'm also providing you the updated projections from the UT Modeling Consortium. You can see that, you know, last week, things were looking relatively flat. Now, with the increases that we've experienced over the past week in terms of admissions, that 60% increase in cases that we've seen, the projections for the holidays are looking ugly again. The projections are that right now, it looks like we will transition to the orange stage that going past 40 admissions to the hospital right around Thanksgiving. So the day before or the day of Thanksgiving, the projections currently estimate that we will hit 40. Again, these are projections. This is not a forecast of what will happen. But assuming that transmission is staying the same over the next couple of weeks, this is what we can expect to see. Next slide, please. This is a graph of the hospital beds being utilized. Similarly, a significant increase over the coming three weeks leading into the first and second week of December with more than 300 admissions to the hospital by the second week of December. Next slide, please. And finally, these are the projections for ICU utilization. Back over the summer, we were talking about identifying 350 ICU beds available in Travis County that could be utilized in a surge event. Unfortunately, given the situation around Texas and the fact that many of the resources that we would need to utilize to staff extra beds are being utilized in El Paso right now. And certainly, we have other jurisdictions, Lubbock, Amarillo, Dallas, and others who are facing significant increases in cases. We can't depend upon that staffing that we may have if we were the only ones surging at the time. So in discussions with our healthcare executives, we believe a more reasonable number of hospital or ICU beds for that surge is around 200. So you can see that with this projection, through the second week of December, we are approaching 130 or so ICU beds needed in the next three weeks. And certainly, we are going to hit the maximum soon after that. I bring that up because if the situation worsens, if these projections are too optimistic, we may have to have discussions about taking us into orange or potentially red before Thanksgiving. Again, this is not what will happen. This is what could happen if we do not change the risk behavior that's happening right now. You know, this, quite frankly, looks very similar to our entry into the first surge. We are at similar numbers today that we were on June 17th, June 18th, which was about two weeks away from the peak. And it's really up to this community to act in a more protective way, to reinvigorate those calls to protect ourselves and protect our families in our community so that we can turn this beginning of a second surge into more of a bump. We certainly have the possibility of driving these numbers down before Thanksgiving and certainly before Christmas. And, you know, we need to start looking at ways to reduce risk so that we can avoid having a second surge, particularly on the cusp of the possibility of having a vaccine in the near term. Next slide, please. Now, this is an update of our hospitalizations from last week based upon race and ethnicity. The green line represents our Latinx community. Last week, 41.5% of new admissions were from members of the Latinx community, 37% of the white, non-Hispanic community, 14.6% from the African-American community. Again, as we've been seeing throughout this pandemic, we see disproportionate impacts associated with our communities of color. As Director Hayden described earlier, we will continue to focus efforts on these communities through education, through PPE, through immunization for things like flu and certainly prioritization for vaccination for COVID-19. Next slide, please. This is the same data broken down by actual numbers of individuals hospitalized. You can see that the last week of October, we had a significant decrease in our new admissions to the hospital. We went from 142 to 105. But unfortunately, we've seen a significant increase, about 20% increase between the last week of October and the first week of November. So you can see that 54 individuals in the Latinx community hospitalized last week, 19 in our African-American community. So we'll continue to track these numbers and report those to you weekly. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of the new hospitalization based upon age groups. Now, you can see the mustard-yellow line, our 70-79 age group, luckily has seen decreases over the past couple of weeks. You see a slight uptick in our 80-plus age group, which is the orange line. But again, those are the two groups, along with the 60-65 age group, that we are most concerned regarding admissions because those admissions are more likely to lead to ICU needs and certainly more likely to lead to deaths associated with COVID-19. We have seen a decrease in our admissions related to the 20-29 age group. And our 10-19 age group is maintaining itself relatively steady over the past several weeks. Next slide, please. Again, this is the same data broken down by numbers of admissions. You can see again, that 70-70, correction, that 80-plus age group on top there with 21 admissions, 22 in the 70-79 age group, and 26 in the 60-69 age group. So again, those top three age groups are representing about half of the admissions to the hospital over the past week. And again, we are concerned about the impacts regarding longer length of stays for these individuals, ICU admissions, and again, deaths. Next slide, please. This is an update of our positivity by week. Do you recall, two weeks ago, when I last spoke to council, we talked about this, you know, fact that we're relatively steady, 3.8%, 3.9% for about six weeks. Week 44, which was two weeks ago, that bumped up to 4.2%. The data that we have for last week, and there's about 8,000 lab tests that go into this dataset that you're seeing, has a further increase to 5.2%. So about, you know, a 40% to 50% increase over the past two weeks in terms of positivity. We are seeing similar increases in other datasets that we're monitoring as well. Again, certainly, the data is pointing that we are going to continue to head upwards. Remember, the cases that were diagnosed last week are likely to be hospitalized this week. So we've got to continue the work, continue the effort to decrease transmission. We did see a bump before Halloween started. But certainly, we are seeing a significant rise, in many cases, tracking back to Halloween-related activities. Next slide, please. Now, this is a breakdown of the positivity by age group, correction, by race and ethnicity. That red dotted line was the one we were shooting for. You can see back on week 42 that we only had our Latinx population over that 5% and many of the other groups close to the 3% where we'd really like to be. Unfortunately, week 45, we see that our African-American community, our Latinx community, and our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander community all showing positivity over that 5% mark. Last week, so far, our Latinx positivity, 9.0%. African-American, 6.9%. Hawaiian Pacific Islander, 8%. Our white, non-Hispanic, 4.9%. And our Asian American population, 2.9%. So we are seeing significant increases across many demographics in terms of positivity. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of the positivity by age group. Again, back on week 41, week 42, you can see that, well, week 41, all of our age groups were under 5%. That maintained for most in week 42. By the time we get to week 45, our 10-19 age group, 20-29, 40-49, and 50-59 are all significantly over 5%. And you can see, certainly, our 50-59 age group is a new trend that we have not identified before, but certainly concerning. Remember that as age increases, there is a correlation between increased hospitalization and increases in death. And we're certainly concerned about that increase in that 50-59 age group. Again, when we look at the positive cases tested by APH in the past seven days, about 50% of those cases are in the 20-29 age group and 30-39 age group. So we are seeing significant trends in those groups as well. Next slide, please. As Director Hayden mentioned earlier, certainly improvements over the past two weeks in terms of our cases at long-term care facilities. This is on our dashboard page at austin texas.gov/covid19, which has facility-specific information. And as you mentioned, you know, we are seeing ongoing case transmission, And as you mentioned, you know, we are seeing ongoing case transmission, particularly amongst staff. And again, similar to other places, schools and businesses, restaurants, et cetera, we are seeing that activity, that transmission happening outside of the workspace and in social environments. So we'll continue, keep an eye on this and report on this weekly, and as Director Hayden said, continue to support through our long-term care facility task force. I will mention that we have not seen any cases associated with visitation changes at nursing homes. There are strict protocols in place for those visitations, and we're pleased that we have not seen any cases associated with that so far. Next slide, please. This is a draft update of our school report for last week, 10/26 to 11/8. You can see a total of 101 cases associated with schools across Travis County, 63 in students, 35 in staff, and three in individuals visiting the campus. This may seem alarming that there's 100 cases, more than 100 cases in our schools. These cases represent 73 different schools over the past week with cases, and only a few that have more than three cases. Again, in talking to our schools' task force, in talking to our superintendents, the transmission that we're seeing is the same that we've been talking about for weeks now. Transmission is happening in athletic and extracurricular activities, and more substantially, it's happening outside of the school building itself. It's happening in social gatherings. It's happening when people are getting together to share a meal. It's happening when they're getting together at parties and other events. So this is happening throughout our community. A significant portion of the cases that we're seeing, the new cases that we're seeing, are, you know, tracking back to times when people are taking their mask off and closing the six-foot distance to be close to other people, family and friends, generally speaking. And this is why it's important for us to remind folks and to certainly echo this messaging everywhere that we can, that there is not a safe space outside of your household. So if you were going outside of your household, or people are coming into your household, you need to have a mask, you need to have the social distancing, you have to pay close attention to the hand hygiene. I just can't stress it enough that if we don't really get our vigilance back, if we don't change our ways, if we don't go back to those protective actions that we were taking over the summer and in the spring, we are going to have a miserable winter. And now's the time to change that. Now's the time to go back to those protective habits. If you, you know, folks started shaking hands or hugging, it's time to stop again. If they started having larger gatherings or getting together with family and friends at restaurants or at their home, it's time to stop again. This is, we're in a very dangerous spot, and we have to be very concerned that cases are surging across the U.S. and across the state. Our emergency management plan partly depends on redundancies, depends on having resources that we can pull into areas that are facing surges. If surges are happening across the state, surges are happening across the country, that redundancy goes away, and we don't have that extra protection that we need to handle a more significant surge. Next slide, please. Again, it's flu season, as Director Hayden mentioned earlier. Happy to say that our flu cases have remained low throughout Travis County, 14 total cases to date, three influenza A, 11 influenza B, with an overall positivity rate over the season so far of 1.04%. So this is excellent news. Again, if folks haven't gotten their flu shots yet, now's the time to get it, not next week or sometime later this month, today. Because as I just described, we don't have the redundancy in our healthcare system to manage a surge of COVID-19 and influenza. Next slide, please. This is a graph showing a comparison of this season, which is in blue, to the previous three seasons. You can see that we continue to track below the prior three seasons this year. And again, the influenza vaccination, the social distancing, the masking, the hand hygiene will help us maintain this line very low, which is what we need to do to keep our community safe. Next slide, please. And again, we remain in stage three. You know, our trigger point has been 40 for that transition to stage four. We are currently reviewing the data, the trajectory of change, as well as the updated information from our healthcare systems. And I will say that there is a possibility that we may need to transition to stage four before 40, depending upon the angle. And again, this has a lot to do with the fact that our surge capacity is diminished because of what's going on in other jurisdictions around the state, around the country. So we will update council next week, as well as Commissioner's Court, and provide further information on that. That concludes my presentation. Spencer, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden, and we'll pause for questions from the council, and then we'll again hear from Director Whitman after that.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden, for your continued efforts. Do any council members have questions? Councilmember Ellis?
I do. Thank you, Dr. Esq. Can you tell me any more information about the Eames ISD cases? That number's strikingly high for such a small school district. Is it one cluster, multiple clusters, extracurricular activities? Anything else you can tell me about that?
Primarily, it's related to extracurricular activities. I don't have all the details for the cases last week, but we had issues, as we've had in other school districts, related to athletic events and transmission in those programs. We have done some widespread testing of the football program within Eames to try to identify additional cases and put a lid back on it. But we can certainly reach out to your office and provide some further information.
Yeah, I'd certainly love to know more if that information's available and to see how we might be able to curtail that number from going up any higher.
We're working very closely with Tom Leonard, the superintendent there. And Eames has been very engaged and proactive in terms of working with us to limit the spread of COVID-19 there and certainly in the early stages of planning.
Very much appreciate that. I know the 78746 ZIP code, when we started mapping ZIP codes, had kind of shown up higher pretty early on. So I'd love to know how we can help be a part of the solution to that.
Councilmember, I'll also mention that, you know, one of the things that we're seeing, particularly in the suburbs, is parties happening with high schoolers. And this is really the primary way that we're seeing this spread. You know, we have athletic programs, and we can see cases associated with athletic programs, but it's more likely that that spread is not happening on the field. It's happening when they're getting together for meals, or they're getting together for parties. So I think it's important for us to encourage all of our communities to really, if they took a break from the vigilance and started having larger gatherings, to go back to that more protective action so we can change the shape of this curve. We really do have to flatten it again.
I can appreciate that. I know I've been out when I'm at the store, and I see, you know, groups of friends kind of going to the store together the way that we would have seen pre-COVID. So appreciate you paying close attention to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Alter?
Good morning. I know that AISD only very recently kind of went back to school, and in both of my kids' schools, there were cases over the last week that were reported. Can you tell us what portion of kids are actually back in school where we're seeing the numbers that we're seeing right now? Because I think it really varies across ages and across schools and populations. Do we have any knowledge about that?
Real quick, Councilmember Alter, we can hear you, but it's like really loud and kind of, there's a noise attached to it, just FYI.
Okay, I'll see what I can do on that. We've got like four zoons going within an area, so I'll try to turn the volume down then. Thank you.
Councilmember Alter, there is some variability based on the school district. I will say that in my discussion yesterday with the superintendent, AISD has about 27% capacity right now who is in person. Generally speaking, most school districts are around 50%. There's some that are a little more, some that are a little less. There's some variation across the county. There tends to be a higher percentage in person at elementary schools and fewer in our high schools. But there's certainly not any that are much above 50% right now. And I think that's part of the reason why we continue to see, you know, relatively low numbers of cases associated with schools. You know, certainly, it would be much more difficult for us to manage the spread of disease if it was at 75 or 100% at this stage. But we will continue to track that. You know, I did have a discussion with the superintendents also about stadium capacity, and they've reinforced their enforcement of that 25% maximum. Many of the school districts who are having football games have less than 25% right now. So I think that's going to continue to protect us as well.
Thank you. May I pretend, is this better? I moved the microphone.
No, it's like really high and distorted, and a bunch of councilmembers pulled their plugs out of their ear. But, I mean, we can hear you clearly, it's just loud and distorted.
Okay, I'll see what I can.
Did any other councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes, I have a quick question for Director Hayden. Thank you for sharing with us what, and you also, Dr. Esq., about what is going on with our long-term care facilities and the, in particular, the PPE kits for the essential workers. So I just wanted to verify, because I'm not sure if I heard it right. So those will have the reusable cloth mask for the workers, the staff in the long-term care facilities, so they can use it with their families and at home? Is that the thinking there, Director Hayden?
Yes, yes, Councilmember. And basically, you know, they're going to send out the request to let them know it's available, and then based upon the response, then the teams will put the packages together and then provide them to the long-term care facilities.
Okay, and then, but just to distinguish, so the PPE that's provided for use in the long-term care facilities, those would be the surgical masks, right, and/or the N95s?
Yes, yes. So the PPE packs includes the N95s. We have provided some gowns, gloves, and face shields.
Okay, okay. And then, let's see. I would also like to understand, and doesn't have to be now, but you could give us maybe a brief update now, maybe send us some more detail. We talked a while back about the creation of a group or a task force, I'm not certain what we were calling it exactly, to work specifically with you all to help reduce the incidence among our populations of color. And is that, can you tell me what that group is working on right now and/or send me information about where I can find out more about exactly what they're working on?
So currently, you know, we have a couple of things in place. We are continuing to work under the Social Service Branch with the priority populations. And so that work is continuing to happen. We have established a strike team specifically for the Hispanic and Latinx communities. And so we meet every other Monday evening at 6:00 p.m. with them, you know, working on, you know, various strategies, you know, bringing information to them. Information comes back to us, and it is directly connected to the plan that we, you know, put in place that went out in the survey. And so we will continue that work on the weeks that we don't meet. There is a team of subset of folks that come together and address high-level tasks. For example, you know, one week, they met about providing additional PPE in the community. Next week, they're going to meet to talk about public charge. And so they just, we just have different topics based upon what the committee would like to see that can be addressed outside of the meeting, and then it comes back to the meeting for a presentation and kind of any questions and overviews. The next phase of it, I've been talking with my team, because we've been looking at the numbers in the African-American community, and so we're going to establish that group of folks next. And that way, they can also, we can work more closely with them and align the work that we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lantaria?
Let me unmute there. You know, we've been seeing the numbers of the Hispanic community and now the blacks and African-Americans. I'm pretty sure y'all track who these people are that are getting this, and you got tracking them to see where they're getting it. Can you give us some more information that, you know, we've been having a lot of efforts out there trying to get the word out to our community and passing out PPE and sanitizers? Can you tell me where these people are actually catching this virus?
You know, according to the data that we have, people are still having gatherings. And we talked about this yesterday at our press briefing. I live at home with my husband and my son, but my sister and her husband decide to come over. They're my family, but we all take off our masks. And so that's what's happening, is that folks are sometimes meeting with other family members that don't live in the house with them, and they're letting their guard down, and they're taking off their masks, you know, and as Dr. Esq. said, you know, people are hugging and shaking hands and, you know, all of the things that we really should not be doing. And so it's important for us to, you know, folks are looking to, because we know we would prefer individuals not, you know, not have these gatherings. In the event that you are going to have these gatherings, we want you to continue to wear your mask, social distance, and, you know, all of those protective measures, we want folks to continue those. But that is significantly, you know, where folks are actually catching the COVID. And we continue to provide you all weekly a non-nursing home report, which picks up all of the other industries. And so there are some other areas that we continue to monitor.
Well, thank you for that information, because I think we're just going to have to put that message out to the public that, you know, it's not, you could catch it at your work site, and you can come up to your other families, to your families, or your brother or sister or dad, and give it to them. So thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kassar?
So of course, the most important thing is for people to take action to avoid a surge. In the last time that- In the, in the last time that the surge started really picking up, in one of these work sessions, we were discussing that because there were more and more cases across the state, uh, because there were more and more cases here, when people were getting tested, it was starting to take longer and longer for the results to come back. Do we know where we are now on how long it takes for somebody goes to a public testing site, how quickly they get the result back?
Councilmember, right now, we have very few cases that, that we've reported over the past week that are older than 14 days old. Uh, so if they're getting tested through APH, generally speaking, uh, those tests are coming back in 24 to 48 hours. Uh, there are a few that are, that are longer than 48 hours. Um, so the information we're getting is certainly more timely than it had been. Uh, we haven't seen huge dumps of, of, of data of old cases like we saw in previous months, so, uh, we are hopeful that, that that will continue as you've just described. As the surge happens locally around the state, around the country, there is certainly a risk that, that lab turnaround times will link it out again.
And then I remember in those case instances where we had still a lot of people who had insurance, who still thought that the best place to go was the city sites, which were really best positioned for those folks without insurance. Um, so again, I think the top, the main message should be, let's not even get there and get folks to not do gatherings. Probably just good for us to remember that if we start to see that increase in people coming to get tests, that if you have a private, if you're, if you have insurance, you can go and get it for free at your physician or medical provider. Uh, whereas the city sites are of course available for everyone, but best saved for those people who have no other option. Um, Director Hayden, I, I know I've asked this before, but it just seems so persistent and consistent. Um, but I don't know if this is for you, Director Hayden, or Dr. Esq., where we are seeing now even more, really the most disproportionate impact in the hospitals being in our black community. And then the positivity rate being highest in the Latino community. And it just seems to be getting more and more persistent and more and more pronounced. I, I, once it's been so constant, I want to draw some sort of conclusion, some sort of lesson out of that. Um, what should we be, how should we be? At this point, when it's, once it's becoming more and more pronounced, where frankly, the Latino hospitalization rate is becoming less disproportionate, which is a good thing, but the positivity rate stays so stubbornly high. And then the black hospitalization rate seems to be getting, in some cases, worse. I mean, how should we be taking action to, to address that? Just because they're different?
Well, you know, I'm going to say really a- across the board. Um, we know that the proven methods are, you know, face covering, hand hygiene, um, social distancing. Um, but I really think the other kind of uh, thing that is really happening, not just in Austin, but across the nation, is folks are getting fatigued. Um, you know, I was just kind of looking on my way, driving into the office this morning and kind of looking at people working on, um, on the highway. And I even noticed that folks were not, they, they're right there with people, but they do not have their face coverings on. And so, um, even like with, with, with kind of the gathering that happened, um, over the kind of Halloween weekend, um, photos were shared with us about how folks, you know, were, were gathering. So, you know, people continue to gather, they continue to, you know, go, uh, you know, around other folks that are not, um, in their families. And then, I mean, let's also think about, you know, I'm going to kind of do a, a plug for this is open enrollment. And so my hope is, is that, um, folks would reach out to foundation communities, um, and enroll, um, to get health coverage for 21 because what happens is, is an individual does not have a primary care physician. Um, 23% uninsured, um, folks live in Travis County. And so the, the information is just showing that people that don't have insurance, that don't have a primary care physician, um, are, are, are tending to be the ones that once they do go to a physician and they get this diagnosis or they go to the hospital, you know, they find all of these other underlying health conditions. And so you, you, you have all of these things that are kind of working and, and typically the populations where this is, where you see it the most is in the Hispanic and the African-American communities. And so, um, and so that really adds to, you know, what we are seeing in our community with the numbers. My, my hope is, is that we continue to work on what type of additional, um, equity strategies that we can put in place as a community to really start to just kind of turn the curve on the equities that we are seeing in our community. And that in itself, you know, will help the, the COVID as well, but it will help us to be a, a stronger community in those populations where we see the disparities.
Well, thank you all, and I'm sure we are all, um, you know, going to keep pushing that message out and then really interested in sort of what the budget conversations as we all learn more there.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Uh, just as a, as a follow-up, Director Hayden, uh, it'd be helpful to understand what we are, from a city's perspective, what we are, are doing, um, uh, to get the word out. In other words, I'd like to have a better understanding of what our program is for, um, for, you know, reaching out, how, how we're using media, for example, or other mechanisms, uh, to reach out. So is that something that you can, um, uh, either talk with us about right now or, or send to me? Or send to all of us?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I can just kind of give you a, a, a high level. Um, you know, so, so typically, you know, we have continued with mass media, um, just kind of really trying to, to reach the masses that way. Um, our staff, um, are, um, working with, um, we have some smaller contracts with, um, nonprofit agency that are working at the zip code area and are providing some outreach and information to them. We've had some partners that have gone door to door. Um, we've had, um, our nonprofit, um, agencies that have provided informations to the info, to the folks that they serve. Um, our staff are, um, we're going to, um, also do an, an additional, um, um, we have a Hispanic, uh, celebrity that my staff are working on. Um, and we're working with Univision on some more targeted, um, getting information out. But with that particular, um, strategy, our hope is, is we'll be able to reach some additional folks. But what we're finding is, is that we have to do a hybrid of, of, of everything. Where, you know, we have folks that are able to get the word out, you know, through our distribution list, contact list. We really, um, really applaud you all for sharing the information because a lot of folks are getting that information from you all's distribution list and that is so helpful, so please continue that. Um, but we've got to be able to get as much information out to populations that may not typically just, you know, turn on the news or, um, you know, we're using radio as well because that was, um, a suggestion that was made from some, some of our community members. So we're just being as holistic as we can be to get the information out.
Uh, one just quick follow-up question. So is that including, uh, paid media? Like, um, uh, you mentioned, um, um, Univision, are we doing advertisements, paid advertisements?
Uh, yes, we, yes, we are, we are. Um, you know, you, uh, pre-election, um, uh, you know, you'll probably start to see us come back again, but, you know, we, we kind of had to get out of the whole uh, business during the election besides radio. Um, but you'll start to see us, you know, have advertisement about testing on, you know, major networks. Um, you'll continue to hear it on our radio stations, um, as well as, you know, working with Univision. And it is paid.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Kassar's and Councilmember Kitchen's, uh, points. You know, I, I, I do, I feel like our, our airwaves have been consumed with election, you know, I mean, I remember just watching the local news and every single commercial was a campaign commercial. And so, you know, I, I certainly agree, um, with Dr. Esq. of course, that it, a- as a whole, it feels like we have become less vigilant and I'll even admit to probably getting more lax than I should have as well. And my husband and I were having the discussion more recently that we need to, you know, um, get back to being where we were in the beginning of this. And I know when we, when this all first started, there were so, I mean, we had that really, we did that council, um, the, 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 um, what's it called, um, commercial, whatever it was. Uh, you know, it's ask, encouraging folks to mask up and, you know, I, I have certainly seen, you know, billboards with made for by private companies, which I appreciate encouraging people, but it, it, I, I, I certainly believe we do need to, a- and I think it's because of the election has really taken a lot of, of, of the attention. And so I certainly hope now that we're past that for the most part, that, um, you know, I feel like as a community, we have always valued science and, and math. And, uh, and, and, and to get back to, um, to concentrating on, on, on those, um, public announcement messages and uh, I, I'm incredibly grateful for the community who has continued to participate in voluntary, um, PPE and thank you to Public Health for, you know, whenever we get questions about wanting more PPE, Public Health, um, I know you have limited supplies and I know you also are concentrating on, um, you know, childcare facilities and, and, and those kinds of things as well because they have such a small supply of, of PPE as well. So, but, um, I did have a couple. Oh, and also to Councilmember Kassar's, um, you know, I, when you asked that question, I, 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 and you, uh, I know you, you know this too, but I just, you know, I thought healthcare for all and, um, and, you know, and, and, and things that really help the minority community are the big things that, you know, we hope that we can, we all, we all keep saying that we can't go back to where we were before this, uh, pandemic. And so I hope that since the election's over, we can concentrate really hard on those efforts and encourage our community and, and, um, all of us, you know, as, as, as community leaders, we're concentrated on different, you know, either, either your own campaign or, or something else that has, has, has maybe distracted from this very important message and, and showing those numbers again. And so I certainly am committed to refocusing and prioritizing and, and getting that message out to, to our community because those disparities, um, really need to be addressed. I had a quick question for, um, uh, Dr. Esq. I know in the beginning when we were talking about what organizations were, were giving us information about positive cases. It was like Public Health, I think Central Health, um, Community Care, and then I think Austin Regional Clinic would share information. I'm curious if our, and I'm sorry if you said this already. Um, do our positive cases also include, I know a lot of people getting rapid tested at CVS and, and Walgreens, I, I don't know if Walgreens, I've heard specifically CVS. Do our positive case numbers include every single entity that is, that is testing people right now?
Mayor Proton, it, they, it includes all of the positive PCR tests in Travis County. We're not reporting positive antigen tests, which are, um, they're not confirmed positives, technically speaking. Uh, it, we, we are tracking that internally. Uh, there hasn't been a, a significant contribution, uh, to positive cases from, from antigen tests. Uh, but we do have that data as well.
So anywhere, the, so the PCR is, and sorry, I don't know this, is there a difference between a rapid test and, and the test that people were getting in the beginning of, of the pandemic?
Uh, there is a difference, but they're both, they're both PCR tests. Uh, one is the Abbott ID Now, uh, which is the rapid version that, that we have internally to Austin Public Health and, and many others do as well, uh, versus the, the send-off uh, test that goes to a lab, which is a standard PCR test that, that we've been used to.
Okay. And then the only other thing I, I thought I had was, I, I think for some, for many who have become a little more lax, it's because there is, this whole thing has been so difficult because there's no end in sight, right? We don't know how much longer, nobody thought we would be, what is this, 10, nine months, almost, you know, eight months in? And, and I think the conversation about the vaccine provides a little bit of hope for people. So if, if, you know, if, as soon as we get any valid, uh, good information, I think maybe that provides people with the end, the end, an, an end is kind of in sight and, and maybe that helps the, the mental feeling of how much longer, you know, is, is this, um, are, are we going to be quarantined and self-quarantined? And so, um, I, uh, I look forward to understanding that, I, in, information a, a little bit more. I've read a couple of articles about, um, testing and, 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 you know, trial testing and, and thinking that there may be something soon. So I think that would be helpful for people to know there's an end in sight. So, you know, if, if, if somebody asks me to do something, I'm like, I don't want to do that for six more months. But if you know, you know, maybe it's only four, maybe that would, um, get people back to that really vigilant, vigilant stage. But regardless, um, the evidence is there to mask, to social distance and, and it saves lives. So, so I hope we can reprioritize and, and, and focus on that more as a community. Did anybody, Councilmember Tovo?
If I can just respond real quick, I, I'll, I'll say that, you know, we, we have the real threat of losing another 100,000 Americans between now and the inauguration. And with a vaccine likely to come probably first quarter, uh, of 2021, now's the time where we should all be working together. Uh, you know, we, we've all seen the pandemic movies and something happens to the star right before, you know, the, the antidote or the, the vaccine arrives. Let, let's not be like that. We, we have the promise in the short term of, of a real solution. And if we can all work hard as a community, as a state, as a country, to band together to suppress the disease now, we can avoid that 100,000 deaths and we can have the promise of protecting the community so that we can avoid large outbreaks in the, in the spring and in the summer.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Tovo? Kathy, it's, it's doing that like, um, chipmunk voice again. Still the same. Are, are you trying to call in? Um, are your questions for, uh, Dr. Esq. or, or, um, Director Hayden? I think that was a yes. Is there, is it possible for, uh, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden to stick around for a couple more minutes? And then we, we could start the, the Vella presentation and then if Kathy's able to, to, to figure out the audio, the, the sound thing, bring, bring them back really quick? City manager?
Um, yes, yes, we, we, we can do that. Um, I think Esq. maybe has about 15 minutes, but, um, yes. Um, so I'll turn over to, to Vella Coroman. Um, and she is going to provide an update about the strategies for the protective lodges.
Listen, Kathy, Kathy, Kathy just came back.
Oh, okay.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Esq., thank you. Thanks for waiting. I have just two quick questions. Um, I know, uh, someone I know went to get a COVID test recently and it was self-administered, which I hadn't before. Um, and having had the COVID test, you know, I know you really have to get it. It seemed like pretty, pretty, um, deep. And I wondered if, if you could comment on whether the self-administered tests in your experience or your evidence are as accurate as the ones that are, that are not self-administered? And if that's, and if there is any difference, uh, well, let me just start there.
Uh, so there are some self-administered tests. There are some tests which are approved for, uh, nasal swabs rather than nasopharyngeal swabs. So the nasopharyngeal, the ones that, that touch your brain, that touch your brain, nasal, just go in the front of the nose. Those nasal swabs are really okay for individuals to self-test, because they're not complicated, doesn't require discomfort. You know, there's, there is variability in the effectiveness of the tests, particularly depending on whether somebody's symptomatic or asymptomatic. And, you know, it also has to do something with the, with the community prevalence of the disease also. So an individual who's asymptomatic, who has a negative test, you know, there's, there's more room for error in those circumstances, if, particularly in those circumstances that they're using a rapid type of test. So there's some variability, really depends on the, the specific test regarding the accuracy.
Can you, can you talk me through why asymptomatic individuals, why there's more room for error in that kind of test? I'm not, I'm not necessarily connecting the facts.
Sure. So first of all, individuals who are asymptomatic, the, what we call the pre-test probability of, of a positive test is much lower. So in that circumstance, if you get a positive test, there may be, it may be more likely to be false positive than a true positive. And, you know, if, if it is negative, one of the concerns regarding the asymptomatic individual is that their viral load may not be high enough to detect a positive. And that's, that's true for the antigen test, and it's true for the, the PCR test. Now, technically speaking, the threshold of detection for PCR tests versus an antigen test or a regular PCR test and a rapid test is, is relatively small, meaning that it's a matter of hours between when the viral load's high enough to be detected by the PCR versus one of the rapid tests. So it's, it's not going to miss a lot. But certainly when we hear worries about the accuracy of the rapid test, it has to do with that asymptomatic population, because the risk is already low, because they don't have symptoms of, of having a positive test.
Thank you. What is, what would you say is the best source of information for really understanding the different kinds of tests? I remember earlier in the summer when I needed to get a test, there were, the test that was being offered through rapid means, not, not here, but in another community, was not, I mean, I think it was about 80% of, based on some of the research I did. So if, if you're an individual who's really trying to get the most accurate information, would you say, is the CDC the best source of information explaining the different tests and their, and their accuracy levels for asymptomatic versus symptomatic?
Yeah, CDC is, is a good resource. And we'll work with our, our, our joint information team to put some links on our, our website for testing. I think a lot of people do have questions about testing. Some people ask, you know, why are we utilizing antigen testing and rapid testing if it's not as good? The answer is because you get a quick result. And from the public health perspective, a quick result that is pretty good, maybe better than a delayed result that is, is more accurate. Because what we're seeing is that somebody may be tested on a Friday, and then get a result till Monday. Well, they're not, they may not be following the directions of, you know, isolate yourself until you get a result. They may be going to school, they may be going to work, they may be traveling via airplane. So having that, that rapid result, particularly for individuals who are symptomatic and have a higher index of concern, would be very helpful for us. In that circumstance, the, the rapid tests are going to perform much better.
I think that would be very helpful information to have available, especially as we move into the holidays, and there may be individuals who want to be around a family member who is ill, and, and they really want to get the most accurate information, and have the ability to kind of choose among different sites. That would, getting a little clarity around those, because it has really shifted, in terms of what is offered where and, and how. Can you talk for just a minute about the 14 days and whether there is any shifting information about that? I noticed a couple of the states that had, had previously, or at least one, that had previously required a 14-day quarantine, now really requires sort of a seven-day period. So can you speak to whether individuals who are wanting to quarantine? Can you, can you just reflect on that for a second?
So the, the current CDC recommendations are still the 14 days. Having said that, we do know that, that most people who are exposed, who eventually will test positive, will do so in the first seven or eight days following the exposure. So there is, there is some work being done to identify whether or not it's safe enough to isolate people for seven or eight days, have them test, if it's negative, release them. Particularly when we think about the impact on, on public safety, the impact on, on healthcare systems, the impact on schools. So there is work being done, particularly focused on those areas. And I'm hopeful that at, at some stage, we can decrease it from 14 days to, to make it more reasonable, and certainly to ensure that we can provide essential services.
Thanks. But for now, 14 days is, is still the...
Correct. And we got a lot of questions, you know. You know, a lot of folks, you know, they get a phone call from the, the school principal saying, hey, your, your child's been exposed. They want to go immediately to get the child tested and, and show the, the negative test. There is no point in getting a test the same day of exposure, or the day after, or two or three days after, unless a person develops symptoms. If they're going to get tested, and they're asymptomatic, and they've been exposed, at least a week following that last exposure is what we would advise. It still doesn't allow you to, to get out of quarantine, but it does give you an indication of whether or not you're likely to, to develop COVID, a symptomatic case of, of COVID or not.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
You bet.
Yeah, that actually just reminded me of, because I did get a constituent question about travel, because I am starting to hear people planning more about traveling during the holidays and, and flying. So if somebody wants to be cautious about, you know, getting tested after that, they should wait. If, once they return, your suggestion is that they should wait at least a week to get the best accurate result. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will say also that if folks are thinking about traveling over Thanksgiving or, you know, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, there are many countries that have very strict requirements for testing and a, a travel health visa, requiring testing within five days of, of travel, and also requiring testing once you've arrived in, in the country. So please do your homework and ensure that, that you have that, those steps in place before you, you book and pay for your travel.
Or don't travel. Okay.
Better yet, don't travel, but...
Yeah, I get, no, thank you, because I know people will, will, will be doing that. So thank, thank you. Councilmember Tovo?
And I was just going to mention on that front, I did note on the CDC, and perhaps it's also on our website, the CDC did a really good assessment of different travel options over the summer. It's kind of a one-pager, looking at really low-risk activities, moderate risk, and then high risk. And I found, our family found that to be quite helpful. So we just recommend that to others who might be considering different, different methods of traveling.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll just give an anecdote. You know, my family and I went for a weekend to an Airbnb down in Kyle, just to get away from the house. Kids need to get out of the house, we need to get out of the house. That's a, that's a very safe out-of-the-house activity, going to the house that's just you're staying at. You know, companies like Airbnb and others have done a great job of, of creating protocols for cleaning, they space out reservations, they generally don't have, but you can't book a place if somebody has left that place within 48 hours of, of your arrival there. So the industry, our businesses are doing a great job of adapting to, to the COVID-19 threat. And, and, you know, as companies do that, we can start to do more normal things. But we have to understand that it's, we're not back to normal yet, and we can't be. So look for those safe options, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
I love that you traveled to, to Kyle, Dr. Esq. I think that's all the questions. So thank you so much for your continued efforts in, in helping us fight this pandemic.
And with that, Mayor Protem, we'll let Dr. Esq. Fishers courts, and then I'll turn it over to Director Hayden.
Thank you, Spencer. At this time, we're going to ask Vella Coroman to come forward and provide a overview on the protective lodges strategy that we have in place. Vella?
Good morning, Mayor Protem and council members. This is Vella Coroman, interim homeless services officer for Austin Public Health. And as Director Hayden just stated, I'll be giving an update on where things stand with our protective lodges. That was part of COVID-19 emergency response. In order to protect the high-risk individuals and to help reduce our community spread, we've stood up five protective lodging facilities. We call them pro lodges.
Yes, okay. Go ahead with the presentation.
Okay, great. So we are looking to be able to close down two of the five pro lodges in December, again, deciding which ones, those would be based on various factors. And that would mean that some current guests at pro lodges would transfer to, to another facility, another shelter, in order to, to consolidate our sheltering operations. We expect some additional rapid rehousing programs to be up and running in December and January with our ESG, our federal coronavirus CARES Act funding dollars, through the Emergency Solutions Grant or ESG coronavirus funding. One of those programs will be starting December 1st, where they'll be taking on new individuals, new clients, to help get them housed. And there is a solicitation open right now for $2.8 million of funds that are coming from the federal government through the state, and then directly to our community that Echo is coordinating the, the award for. And so we're hoping that, that those programs for rapid rehousing will be up and running in December, January. So we would look at planning to close additional pro lodges in early 2021, and basically basing those, those closures on reaching enough exits to folks exiting, again, to safe housing or other safe options. And we're looking at both internal funding and federal funding to cover these operations, the various eligible expenses as we work to ramp down and close the temporary shelters. So finally, we're compiling, compiling information on what gaps exist and what assistance might be needed from a policy or funding or resource coordination standpoint. And we'll be providing status updates at the work session for the rest of the year, in order to let Mayor, Mayor Protem and council know where we stand, and if we have identified needs that we need to put forward to, to the community. And we've, I know at last work session, Councilmember Kitchen had specifically asked about what challenges we're facing in, in our exits. When working to house people, all of our current existing housing programs are still in operation throughout our community. So this is an additional 300-plus people that we have been trying to get into housing options on top of all of the other programs, where people are getting housed through rapid rehousing programs or permanent supportive housing programs. So there's certainly a challenge in terms of staffing limitations, and our nonprofit agencies adding more capacity. Again, that's been happening, but it's been slower than, than, than we'd like, and that's just part of our reality. There's also just, tends to be turnover at times. We have quite a bit of federal funding that's come throughout the whole country, including to the state. And so there have been additional staffing positions open, and so people might move to a new, a new job, and that creates a vacancy where they were, and then it takes time to hire, you know, to fill that position. So there is a little bit of, of a turnover effect with the staffing. It typically takes 60 days or so, once someone has enrolled in a program, to, to get into housing. We can, our community can do that in, in 45 or so, and that's what we've really been pushing to have happen with, with our guests at the pro lodges who need housing assistance. And we're looking, we've put together a capacity building team, with the help from our consultant city staff and Echo staff, are currently assessing any unmet needs and figuring out solutions to build capacity in our community. Because this is not just diverting or pivoting our current programs, but really expanding our resources in order to house individuals who may need housing assistance at the pro lodges. So at that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Vella. So one question I have is, I'd, I'd like to understand how the closure of the pro lodges fits into our overall strategy, hotel-motel strategy. And the reason that I'm asking that is because, because the addition of, the addition of these pro lodges that have served, you know, about 300 people, I guess, has, has been helpful beyond just COVID for our community. And so now what we're talking about doing is reducing our capacity as a city to provide this kind of, you know, interim housing shelter, I guess might be the best word for it. So, so, so I'm wanting to understand how, instead of just dropping back to where we were before COVID, how we're going to transition this into improving our capacity as a community? The other thing that, so that's one question about, I'd like to understand how this, how this fits with our hotel-motel strategies. That's one thing. Second thing that causes me a bit of concern is that, you know, as we talked about earlier with Dr. Esq. And also Director Hayden, we're not past COVID at this point. So we're, we're going ahead and shutting down, you know, two of our pro lodges, and planning to close additional pro lodges next year. And so I'd like to understand that better. But we're, but we're still in a pandemic, and we're about to be in our second, you know, second wave. So I'm, I'm wondering what it would take to continue our pro lodge efforts at the level that we've had them at. And it concerns me a great deal to start shutting down when we're still in the midst of the pandemic and talking about, yeah, the second wave. So I guess all that boils down to two questions, two overarching questions. Why are we shutting down now? And what would it take to keep those going? So that's one big question. The second question is, when we do, as we do start shutting down, how does that transition into our hotel-motel strategy? So we're not just having a level of capacity for shelter and then just dropping? And so, and, so I'd like to ask you to speak to those things. I do, I do hear you about the capacity building plan, lodges around staffing and those kinds of things. I think that's very helpful. I appreciate understanding that and assessing the path to try to address that through your capacity building plan. So I appreciate that.
Sure. So the, the first question about still being in the midst of the pandemic, we're, we're very aware of that, which is why we've made it a priority not to, not to exit people. The, the pro lodges were stood up as a protective measure for people who have, you know, high risk at infection and, and high risk of negative outcomes, should they become infected with COVID-19. And so that is why we are not, we are not shutting them down and exiting people without a safe place to go. people without a safe place to go. So, we are basing our closure on the ability and the rate at which we can find safe exits, right? And so, whether those are housing options, which is ideal, and, and other people, you know, local housing options through our local housing program or other safe housing options, that's our, that's our top priority. And we absolutely, it would be an absolute mistake to, to close down these protective facilities in the middle of any surge or certainly where we are now, which is still significant community spread through the community. So, the funding primarily to operate these lodges has been tied to our federal funding, and a large amount of that ends at the end of December. And so, that is through the CARES Act coronavirus relief funding. And so, that was, you know, that was sort of what we were planning around initially, having no idea when we started in March, how long this would go on and sort of, you know, what, what turns the pandemic would take. So, you know, it, it sort of ties into your second question, I think, as well, in that the ideal situation for people who do not have a place to safely social distance and have, you know, hygiene resources, which would be some sort of shelter or home, the ideal situation would be housing to have a home rather than shelter. And, and so, the motel conversion strategy, of course, happened, you know, came into play well before the pandemic hit our community. All along, the city staff had been looking to purchase buildings, and it coincided with the protective lodge facility in that we had, we have some facilities now. There are two of our five protective lodges that the city owns the buildings. But our, our primary concern is to convert the building into housing as a permanent option rather than prolonging the temporary space and the cost of operating that as a shelter, as a temporary shelter. So, it is, it's, it's tricky and it's complicated, and we're working through that. That's part of our decision process. I will say that one of the facilities that we have, that we have operating as a pro lodge right now will remain as, as a sort of long-term sheltering facility for the foreseeable future. But we do, we are looking at sort of the emergency operations under our emergency operations center, certainly not completely siloed from our normal operations in our community, but there are some differences in how things are run and how things are funded and how things play out. So, our goal is to look at the five protective lodging facilities that we have right now with the people in them and, and plan on those safe exits into, into housing options and safe options and be turning those facilities into permanent housing options as we can along the way.
Okay, just one. I know others have questions too, so I'll just ask follow-ups. So, so, so Bella, one of the things I'm operating on in the assumption is that there, that there's a continued need for the pro lodges in the sense that there are more people that would need to be, need this kind of shelter as we continue through the pandemic. So, so that's, that's the premise behind my thought of keeping, keeping these open as opposed to not having that option available anymore. So, would you, would you agree that we're in a situation where we, we don't have that kind of protective housing for every single person that needs it at the moment? Is that right?
We don't, although there are individuals that have higher, higher health needs and higher acuity than, than others. And so, we certainly need more shelter in general in our community in terms of more shelter and more housing. That is for sure.
Okay, then I'll ask one question and turn it to others who may want to ask. So, the hotel motel, I, I think we might need a longer conversation about it. I, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. So, I think what I heard was that, that the thinking is to turn those places into permanent housing as opposed to the, the housing-focused shelter concept that we had been talking about as places that people could come and then, you know, would be connected to, to services for longer-term housing. So, to me, that's a change and that maybe I missed along the way. I'm not sure we had a discussion about that approach. So, because if we do that, then that leaves, still leaves us with needs for more of the housing-focused shelter. So, I'd like to have a longer conversation, you know, about that though. And we've had these conversations about, there's pieces, there's pieces. You know, I mean, I think consultants showed it to us as puzzle pieces, and there's, and we need all those pieces. But the shelters are one of those pieces as well as the permanent housing. So, which I thought was what we were doing with the hotel motels that we were acquiring. So, that really is a, to me, that's probably a longer conver, I don't know if it's a conversation everybody has, wants to have today, but I think as a council, we need to understand that. Because to me, that sounds like a different approach for those hotel motels than we were talking about before. So, am I hearing that, that right, Bella?
So, we can certainly give a more, a broader update on the hotel motel conversion strategy. What we're looking at right now of the two properties that have been purchased by the city is that one would remain as a bridge shelter and one would convert into permanent supportive housing. So, there is a continuum along the way, but we know that the permanent supportive housing units in our community are in very high demand. And so, and that housing is really where we would want to put, you know, our investments rather than just sort of prolonging sheltering. So, at this point, we are looking at one of each of the two, but we can certainly give a broader update here in the future for you all.
Okay. What I'd like to have in the future is, obviously, we need all of these types. We need shelter, and we need permanent supportive housing. And so, I just need to understand better, what's the data that's driving what we're doing? And what end are we driving towards in terms of the, the number of shelters we need, the number of permanent supportive housing we need? So, I just need to understand what's driving those decisions and what our goal is and how we're progressing towards that goal.
Perhaps we can have a future meeting where we can have that conversation.
Sure, we can, we can do that.
Councilmember Coster?
I've gotten a chance to, to visit some of the pro lodges in my district and really appreciate everything the staff is doing there. Really important in saving lives. If we, as we get on a path, closing any of these, I think what would be really important would be for us, maybe even just in one-on-ones, to know whether that decision, as we get closer to it, is because we found housing for pretty much everybody and we are on that path, or if it is a funding issue. Because then if it's a funding issue, it would be, just be really useful for us to, to decide whether, well, the fact of the matter is, not enough funding has come down, and here's how we're going to deal with it, or if, or whether there is reprioritization or asks that we can make to buy us the time that we need. You know, I know that the CARES Act dollars is a, is a large, we passed our large budget associated with that, but there was also general fund dollars mixed into that. And so, as we get closer, I think, from the conversation you just had with councilmember Kitchen, what's most interesting to me is just as we get closer to that point, it would be useful to know if, if what is driving any closures is funding or if it's that we actually have housed folks and are ready to just convert into BSH.
Sure, that makes sense. And we can certainly provide that information on the update as we, the updates we provide at the work sessions moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Carmen.
Councilmember Tovo, and then Councilmember Alter?
Yeah, just very quickly, I appreciate my colleagues asking questions about how best to move forward and how we can continue the work that staff are doing to identify long-term housing solutions. But I also wanted to stop and really appreciate Bella, you and your staff and all those who have been involved housing. I think you said, where Director Hayden said 63 individuals. Is that the number?
Yes, as of yesterday, 63.
That's really terrific. And thanks too to the whole of the community partners who are working to make, to make that possible.
Yes, I appreciate you mentioning that. We have multiple partners who have, who have really committed resources and, and really rallied around this additional, additional work and very appreciative for them as well.
Councilmember, were you done, Councilmember Tovo? Uh, Councilmember Alter?
Uh, thank you. Ms. Carmen, I was wondering if you could speak for a moment about how we've done relative to COVID rates among our homeless population. It's my understanding that we've not had a major breakout. Can you just speak to that?
Sure. We don't have a definitive count of people who experience, people experiencing homelessness who have tested positive for COVID-19, because people may have tested positive at a clinic or a lab, or I'm sorry, at a hospital, some other provider, and did not indicate their housing status, that they are experiencing homelessness. But we do have a count that just over 100 individuals experiencing homelessness have, have tested positive and recovered from COVID-19. We did have an outbreak at the very beginning in one of our congregate shelters. And during the surge in July, we had some very small numbers of people in other shelters, including staff members, maybe two or three in different locations, but have really managed to, to keep the numbers down across our community for this population and, and for the, the staff and different agencies that, that work with, with this population in, in congregate settings, which is, which is a very big challenge. And so, yes, we have a pretty, a pretty low rate. And we really credit the, the protective lodging as, as helping with, with that, having both the protective lodging and the isolation facility, the ISO FAC, certainly when we have had people with symptoms or known exposure or, or tested positive, that we have a place for people to go and be safe and be isolated from others and not, not spread that. So, that's been a significant resource in our community for sure.
Thank you. And I, and I just wanted to open that up to highlight because I think it is a success story for our pandemic response. And, you know, we set out to try to protect vulnerable populations. And with respect to the homeless population, you know, not seeing a massive spread as other cities have, I think, is, is important and a testament to the strategy that does, though, underlie, you know, concerns as we potentially move into a second surge over what happens. And so, I just want to, you know, underscore comments that some of my colleagues have made already, that, you know, we, we need to be really mindful as we move forward for the context within which we're, we're operating, which I know that you are, you are keeping in mind. The other question that I wanted to get some additional clarity, and I know that you prepared to talk mostly about the protective lodges. And so, if you don't have this data right now, you can provide it to me later. It's my understanding that with COVID, we have had to modify the capacity levels in the way that many of our shelters are functioning, because some of the traditional congregate settings don't comply with sort of what we need to do to protect people under COVID conditions. Can you give us a sense of how much less capacity we have in those shelters because of those modifications?
Certainly. And I, and as you, as you suggested, I don't have the numbers in front of me. It really depends on, on the facility setup. So, we have some shelters, typically our, our family shelters and some domestic violence facilities and some other congregate settings are much more separated in terms of individual rooms and bathrooms, where they've essentially been able to keep pretty close to 100% capacity. Our, our two largest shelters for people experiencing homelessness downtown, the Arch and the Salvation Army, have had to reduce their capacity by quite a bit, about 50% or so, I would say, because of the setup of the, of the facility, where it is more dormitory style. You know, many more people would typically be living and sleeping in, in, in the same areas rather than being separated out. So, it does depend, it differs by facility based on the, the actual physical structure of the facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Ms. Carmen. Does you want to close, manager?
Sure. Again, just appreciate the engagement from council on this important topic, hearing from both Director Hayden, Dr. Esq., and now interim director Bella Carmen on our continued effort to stem the tide of this pandemic. We are, we have a lot of work left to do, but we have staff that is committed to doing that, and we appreciate the support and leadership of this council. So, thank you. With that, we'll conclude our briefing and we can turn back to pulled items.
Thank you. The items that I had pulled were 10 and 43, but I just received a message that 10 has been postponed by staff. Is that right? Is there staff that can speak to that?
We do have staff that can speak to that, but that is correct.
Who had, who had, I'm sorry, it was Councilmembers Flanagan and Alter. Do you want to ask your questions of staff? Or do you, are you okay with the post, Councilmember Alter?
It was Councilmember Tovo, to be clear. That was a mistake from staff.
Okay, sorry, but, so is Tovo and Alter?
Um, I just want to flag it here because the folks that I spoke with were not city staff. I spoke with Mr. Noonan and Mr. Joslove, and they were going to be adjusting and updating the service plan for, I guess, whenever we do bring it up. The, so I just want to flag the issue to make sure that staff can follow up on it. So, and Mr. Noonan and Mr. Joslove were, were, were quick to say that they could adjust the service plan. The issue that I was concerned about is that from a budgeting perspective, the city has been very conservative, understandably, with respect to our estimates of our hot funding year over year. The way that the service plan was written was such that if we had raised an amount of hot taxes that was above the annual estimate, that that money would go into sales and marketing, even for the 40% bucket that was supposed to go for the convention center bucket. And I guess there were a couple of different models of the way that could be shaped, and they will now shift it back so that, that amount, if it does exceed the estimate, would still go into that 40% bucket accordingly. And my understanding is that they're planning to make that change, but I just want to raise that for staff and my colleagues so that they know that we'll be looking for that.
You kind of cut out there at the end. Were you just saying so that it can be looking for that?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues and staff can be looking for that as it comes back and as they revise the service plan.
Okay. Councilmember Kitchen? Okay. Councilor Kitchen?
Yes, thank you. I think that postponing it will be helpful, give us all some more time to think through it. So my questions will be, and I shared these with Mr. Noonan earlier, my questions will be when it does come back. Well, first off, do we have a date that it will come back? Or at this point, it's just postponed? Can I ask that question first? Does staff have a date?
Indefinite postponement, but we will continue to update you. ACM Gonzalez, any update on that?
You're correct, City Manager. Indefinite postponement. Mr. Noonan and other stakeholders need some time. They anticipate it won't be very long, and I don't know if Tom wants to add to that, but right now, we don't want to put them under undue pressure to meet a date, and so we are requesting an indefinite postponement with the target of coming back as soon as possible.
Okay, that's fine. So my questions will relate to when that comes back. My questions will relate to the conversations we had had previously about the ability and the route for addressing funding towards some dedicated funding for homeless services. So I'll want to understand that better. At some point, I'll want to have an executive session so that we can dig into the legal aspects of it and make sure that we're understanding that. So that's just a flag. And those are questions that I had already brought up to Mr. Noonan, so.
Was there any other, were there any other questions for staff on item 10? Councilor Tovo?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate staff postponing this item right now. I think I had some questions too that I think would, sorry, I have like a music concert going on. That's a little better, thanks. Anyway, I appreciate the willingness to postpone it. I have some questions that I would like to talk about in the context of potentially making some revisions to the service plan. I went back and reviewed our conversation and the question and answer from September 28th, the meeting, September 28th, 2017. And at that time, the concession was 40% also, but with 20% as a direct concession to the city and 20% through the convention center. And so I had intended today to ask some pretty particular questions, and actually, and ask that they be updated through the Q and A, the same questions updated for the current service plan. But also, would like to talk about a direct concession in addition to the 20% that would go through the convention center. And then when this does come back to us, I have some questions that I also intended to ask in executive session, including some questions surrounding the legal analysis of the legislation that passed last session related to TPID funding and uses. And I'll just say, you know, part of my interest in exploring whether we can adjust the service plan for that direct concession is links up with what Councilmember Kitchen said. All along, we've really talked about the TPID as a mechanism for, you know, doing all the things TPIDS are supposed to do in terms of marketing and assisting our convention center and Visit Austin in attracting visitors to our city. But we also absolutely talked about it as a source of dedicated revenue for homelessness. And so I am interested in that direct concession in part because that was, you know, the path we've been proceeding along in terms of that direct funding. So when it comes back to council, I have a couple of questions to ask in legal. In executive session, I have that question about why the switch from 20 direct, 20 to through the convention center to 40% through the convention center. And then I think it would be really helpful, we've had conversations back in 2017 and since about that path through the convention center back out to the city. And it is, it remains unclear to me. I think what would be helpful is if we have kind of a diagram along the lines of what Carla Stefan did that illustrated the flow of funds back when we were talking about hotel occupancy taxes in relationship to the convention center convention. If we had some kind of diagram like that, I believe that would position us better as a council and as a community to really understand how that money that goes through the convention center comes back to the city and what requirements, how the different requirements for TPID dollars and the different requirements for hotel occupancy tax dollars relate to that movement through the convention center and back out to the city. So hopefully, that was clear. I'm happy to work with staff on clarifying those questions, but I think it would be best accomplished in a diagram form. And then I would want to also talk in executive session about some of the conversations that we've had about restrictions on funding and restrictions on the uses of hotel occupancy taxes, and now adding to that restrictions on the use of TPID funding. Because some of the, I'm having trouble aligning some of the different answers we've gotten about when restrictions apply and when they don't. So again, thank you very much. I think there's before it moves on to the hotel years, but I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're having the conversation and are beginning the process.
You kind of cut out there too, Councilor Tovo, but I think we got the most of your comments at the end there.
My last comment was just, I'm glad that, I appreciated the postponement and the opportunity to have those conversations. The last thing I said was just, but I'm glad that we're having those conversations and are moving forward with the TPID.
Right. Were there any other questions on item 10? All right, thank you. Thank you, staff. And then item 43 was pulled by Councilwoman Natasha Harper-Madison, and that's the last item that I have listed as pulled. So, Councilwoman Renteria, do you have another one, or you have a question on 43?
I have another one. I want to pull 20 and 58.
Okay. So we can get staff available on 20 and 58 while we talk about item 43. And if I can, Councilor Kasar, can you take the chair? I need to step away just for a second, but we're talking on 43 right now.
Okay, we'll move to item 43. Councilmember Kitchen, are you raising it up?
I just had a quick, different question real quick when we get to it. And that was really about item number 11, which is the 380 agreements. My understanding was that that was going to be postponed, and I just wanted to confirm that.
That's my understanding as well. Is that right, Manager? That item 11 is also being postponed.
I'm going to ask ACM Gonzalez to confirm that.
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Okay, we'll move to item 43. Councilmember Harper-Madison?
Thank you, Councilmember Kasar. I just had some, you know, sort of general commentary, for no other reason to make sure that all of my colleagues understand exactly what the intent was here. Item 43 just obviously brings a much-needed focus to a long-neglected part of East Austin that is basically on the precipice of really experiencing considerable growth. And I mean, the kind of impactful, long-term growth that we really have to be very thoughtful about right now. So there's a substantial amount of anticipated development in the area, as we all know, including significant investments like Walter E. Long, Colony Park Sustainable Community Initiative. However, I do think, and I always have thought, I mean, even just coming in, I've thought there was something that lacked in the way of cohesive overall vision. Just for no other reason to ensure that these projects not only support each other, but that they actually help to create great places to live and stable jobs and improve connectivity and provide high-quality public spaces. So this is in my mind's eye. And again, from the beginning, I thought, I couldn't help but think, like, these things are all connected. Why aren't we looking at this in a way that connects them better? So in my mind's eye, this is our opportunity to really get it right and get ahead of unfettered growth with more proactive action in this area, especially with regard to it. These are really important. Implementing Project Connect, we can spur economic development. We can limit sprawl and associated strain on our city resources. We can encourage healthy living. We can minimize the impacts of traffic and congestion and limit greenhouse gas emissions. We can provide more housing opportunities at every, and I mean, every income level. We can mitigate displacement. But we really need to act before it's too late. My staff, along with the mayor's office, city staff, community members, so many, which, by the way, thank you, community members, who offered your time, your talent, your treasures. So many community members have worked so hard over the past couple of months to really put together this resolution. So with this one, I just wanted to get ahead of it and just like, I know what my intention was. While this is definitely going to be the first step of many, my hope is that through our continued collaboration, along with the city manager, we will ultimately create the future model for equitable planning in our city. And this is so important to me. It's one of, I think, at the end of my four years, this will be my baby. And so I'm really proud of this one, and I look forward to having your support. And I hope that if there are any questions that you have between now and Thursday, that you feel comfortable asking them of me or myself. But that's it, more or less in a nutshell.
Thanks, Councilmember Harper-Madison. I look forward to supporting it. I see the mayor pro tem is back, so we're on item 43, and I'll hand it back to you.
Any questions, of course, via message board or something if you're not in Councilmember Harper-Madison's subcourt. Councilmember Alter?
Thank you. Councilmember Harper-Madison, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think we have a real opportunity to be thinking and talking about these groups altogether. You know, we didn't have a lot of conversation, for instance, when we talked about the Walter E. Long Park Master Plan or Vision Plan. We didn't talk much about the Expo Center. And I think, I hope that this process can help us restart and rejigger the relationship with the county and the conversations there and be a catalyst for a really important set of larger conversations. I did want to get a sense of the timing because there are lots of different pieces that are moving, and some are moving faster than others. And because there's so much ambition in this, I wanted to get a better sense of the timetable that you had in mind, and then how do we fit certain pieces that may be moving at different speeds altogether?
I'm hesitant to say so today. For no other reason, we still, like I said, there are so many community members who have put so much time and effort into their efforts around the, you know, specific components, in which case I would be hesitant to offer a timetable today, but happy to follow up with you and your office to give you a better idea how I think we might be able to calibrate this thing in a way that makes sense, you know, in the appropriate sort of general order.
So I think, no. Now, my mute button was going crazy on and off, so I apologize. So I appreciate that. And, you know, part of it is, you know, in what order, but also just, you know, some decisions are going to need to be made on certain things on a timetable that is not dictated by this planning process. And I don't even know necessarily which all of those pieces are because there's so much in here. But they're, you know, choices are going to be made on, you know, what Tesla is doing or what the Expo Center has to do that may, and what Project Connect has to do or Colony Park that may move differently than the speed with which we're able to move, say, on Walter E. Long or John Trevino. And I just, I don't know that we can get everything resolved down to the level that we ultimately want it in time for some of those decisions to be made. And so I just want to flag that we have to have a flexible enough planning process. And this may very well do this. I just wanted to get a sense of your thoughts on that so that the pieces can move when they do need to move at a different pace.
I completely understand what you're saying, and I think the one thing that should offer us something in the way of comfort is that essentially, we're just asking the city manager to help us bring back the scope, in terms of the scope, the process, the timeline. I think this in and of itself is offering us the opportunity to get that information by way of direction of them bringing that back to us. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you. I'll reread it again and see if that's how I read it. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Councilwoman Flanagan, then Councilwoman Poole?
Thanks, Councilmember Harper-Madison, for including me as a co-sponsor on this item. I think it's more important work that we need to be doing and trying to build things cohesively. I have added language to it that I think is either already posted or will be there for Thursday about including Travis County in this process. You know, having all of the really crazy annexation lines out there, which, in most cases, because of changes in state law, cannot be changed. I think we need to make sure that we are partnering with the county in how we do this planning process so that it can be aligned with whatever their PID processes may be as they continue to build out new developments outside of our jurisdiction, but will absolutely benefit from the amenities that City of Austin taxpayers are paying for. And so we have to find a better way to be partners with the county. And I'm hopeful with two new members of the commissioners' court that we can find a really synergistic approach. And this will be one of many things where I hope we, like we did for Project Connect, do some joint work sessions, get us all at the same table so we can be co-creating the same type of vision.
Councilwoman Poole?
And I think Allison was asking a question about a timeline. I definitely think all of us should, if there's any aspects of the development out at Colony Park, which I certainly have been a fan of and supportive of and attempting to advance it in the six years I've been on council, I mean, it's been going on a long time. I think all of us would need to know what the timing, what the timelines look like in the public, and certainly appreciate that information too. So whatever it is that staff is pulling together, I would expect that y'all would continue to brief us publicly on aspects of the development at Colony Park so we can continue to support it and make sure that it's continuing in the right direction. Certainly on board for that, including, of course, working with our colleagues at the county level. It's music, I think, to all of our ears to hear that the diocese is interested in that kind of collaboration. I think that too has been a long, that partnership has, you know, kind of ebbed and flowed over the years. And I think we're poised in a really great posture to make additional strong efforts in that direction. Thanks.
I don't see any more questions. Did you want any closing remarks, Councilmember Harper-Madison?
No, not necessarily. I mean, I think if there was anything I could point out real quick just to offer something in the way of just further scope for, the first be resolved is the city manager is directed to return to council with a planning scope and process for how to accomplish this. I think, hopefully, that answers some of these questions. But I do look forward to being able to, if we find ourselves in a position where there's a lack of clarity, like, you know, thank you, by the way, Councilmember Flanagan, for being willing to be a co-sponsor and for offering, you know, what I think does help to fortify what it is that we're trying to put forward by way of offering our colleagues at the county the opportunity to work alongside us. And so I do think if there are any questions moving forward, we can get there. So that was Beal. Thank you. You guys, forgive me, there's like three Zoom meetings happening in one very small space right now. It is ridiculous. I mean, 2020, wow. I don't know if you can hear my daughter learning math right next to me, but I'll just mute real quick.
I was just going to say, I don't know if that was your background noise, or I was going to tell people to mute. I think, or ask people, rather. I think those are all the questions for item 43. The next item that Councilwoman Renteria pulled was 20. Do we have staff available? And maybe you can help us with your question, Councilmember Renteria?
Yes. My biggest concern is that, you know, I just found out about this location. Item 20 is the proposal to move the Downtown Community Court. And they're recommending that it gets built there on Second Street, which is 1719 East Second Street, which is like half a block from the most eastern point of the boundary of the Downtown Community Court that you can put this. And I'm really concerned because I haven't heard anything about the And I, I'm really concerned, because, uh, I haven't heard anything about the community being, uh, contacted, or have they gone through the contact team? And I'm a, I'm afraid that if we go ahead and, and, and approve this, that there's going to be a lot of angry residents, because it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You know, it's, uh, the Chalmers, it could rebuild, there's a real nice restaurant on the corner of Chalmers, um, um, there's condos across the street, there's a single-family houses on the other side. I mean, it's just, and I'm concerned, because this is the first time, yesterday was the first time I've heard about this location, and, and I'm going to request that, uh, we postpone this and give it more time. Uh, I, I'm just afraid that, that we're going to be completely away from downtown, and, and, you know, we, we, uh, have a big problem there on, uh, Cesar Chavez and Chalmers, which it's, uh, it's just a half a block down, with a lot of drugs, and even Capital Metro had to pull their bench down there because of dealing there. So I, I just don't like the idea of, uh, of, of the environment, and then the people are, are going to be really, uh, I, I don't know, but I, I have a feeling that if, if this gets pushed through without, you know, having the neighborhood have any kind of input in it, uh, that, uh, we're going to have a lot of angry people, and I, I just don't want to have that during this time period. You know, the election was a lot of a distraction, and now that it's over, well, almost over. But, uh, uh, I, I want more time to really, you know, look into this and see if it's really the appropriate place. I think it's, something like this should be downtown. You know, I hate to think that we're going to have to change to, to East Austin Community Court, but, you know, that's, it's stacked in the, right in the middle of it, so. And we've been getting a lot of these, you know, uh, but, you know, we have it at the library, but, you know, that's going to have to go, but there's, there's a homeless camp there and a surrounding library, and, and we have the, the soup kitchen across the street on Cesar Chavez. And I just don't think it's an appropriate place to put that, which should be looking down there on Red River on the library center, you know, and maybe put it there, which is close to downtown, instead of bringing it all the way to, to East Austin.
As Councilmember, and we do have staff, both Alex Gale from our Office of Real Estate Services, and then Pete Boldes from the Downtown Community Court. Maybe I'll first ask Alex to describe the process of how this site was selected.
Thank you, city manager. Yes, Alex Gale, interim officer for the Office of Real Estate Services. Um, we have gone through, uh, you know, what we feel as staff is a, a rigorous process to ending up at this location. We have looked at multiple, um, city-owned spaces within, uh, all of the jurisdiction for Downtown Austin Community Court. Uh, for their jurisdiction, there is a, a downtown, that does encompass downtown, West Campus, and East Austin. Uh, what we feel is, we've looked at, uh, city locations, uh, being, uh, the first floor of the Falk Library, utilizing the municipal building, uh, which is the old city hall. We've actually gone through, uh, multiple iterations of looking towards, uh, a lease, uh, up for this, um, and, and those deals have fallen through. This is, I think, the third, uh, lease agreement that we've put together. Uh, this is the first one, of course, coming to council, um, but as we've looked for leases, purchases, we have looked to be within, uh, DAK's jurisdiction. Uh, this is the first one, um, due to the sense of urgency of, of finding space for DAK, uh, we wanted to, to move this item forward, uh, as this lease location. Uh, in, in speaking to, I know, uh, Councilmember Renteria did bring up that temporarily, DAK is operating out of the Tarazas Library location, uh, and it is near that location. Um, so it is still within DAK's, uh, jurisdictional boundary, um, but, uh, can also pass it over to Pete to see if he has any, if he has had any conversations, uh, with the neighborhood or anything like that. That is not typically something the Office of Real Estate does, is moving forward with, um, finding a, a location, uh, an administrative location, uh, for, you know, staff to operate out of, uh, but I know that, you know, does provide this, this public-facing service as part of their operations as well.
Good morning, Councilmember City Manager. Um, we have not had any inquiries, uh, from the neighborhood regarding, um, our presence either at Tarazas or, um, regarding the proposed, uh, facility on East Second Street.
Can y'all, can y'all speak to, um, the, a postponement, and if that's, um, something that you, obviously, it can happen anyway, but can you speak to the postponement request?
I would, um, just want to check back with staff to, before we would be able to answer that at this point. I'm sorry.
I know that went through, but you were, you also contacted me yesterday on this issue, and, uh, so I caught these, if I didn't know about it, then, uh, I'm sure that, uh, the community didn't know about it. So, uh, that's a big, that's really concerning to me, you know, because, you know, it's, it's, that's not the process that our community goes through. It's the process of, you know, going and work with the, with the neighborhood to make sure that it's going to be okay, and to give them that information. But I, I feel like if we pass this to, uh, Thursday, it's like we're putting a fast one on the neighborhood, and I don't want to be seen as being part of that. So I would vote out, if we don't get the postponement, I'll just vote against it.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff while they're here? Um, all right, I, Councilmember Togo?
Yeah, just a quick, just a quick question. City manager, I know that, um, I know that real estate staff, I think, reached out to our office, uh, to brief us on this. I just want to make sure that that is, with a, with a real estate issue like this one, um, that the part of the process, part of your process is always to make sure that staff are reaching out to the council member whose districts are impacted, um, by one of those real estate transactions. And so I know that, I know this issue came before the Public Safety Commission, I think, at its last meeting, or, or maybe a couple of meetings ago, but, um, just wanted to ask you what your, what your process is for letting council members know about, about upcoming real estate transactions?
Absolutely, Councilmember. And there were some revisions that were made to make sure that we are engaging with all council offices, but in particular, the ones that are impacted in their district. Um, again, there was a lot going on these last few weeks, but we did, as you mentioned, present before the Public Safety Commission Committee, um, but in order to get on everyone's schedule before this, uh, council meeting, uh, just proved challenging. And so, um, we'll look into the impact of a postponement, and if we're able to still work with a potential, um, landlord to be able to move forward with that, if we were to move to a different cycle, uh, but making sure that we have the appropriate level of engagement of the council offices and the community before moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really would appreciate that, because, uh, you know, it's, I, I just don't like to operate that way. I, I, I just feel like the community needs to know what's going to be coming in, especially with the past troubles that we've had in that area there, because Mexico, as we said before, they moved out, but it's still, uh, I don't know if it's called MCMR anymore, but it's still an inch facility there, um, second between Chalmers and, and Comal. And we do have a lot of, uh, people that just hang out there, you know, and, and it's big, it's concerning to me, you know, that, that, um, we're going to be adding up another facility right next to a restaurant and neighborhood housing that's on the other side of Chalmers. So, uh, I, I, you know, I just want some more time to really grasp this and see if, uh, it's, this is the right place to put something like, like the Downtown Community Court. So that's, that's my big concern, and I always think that, you know, you're going to be forcing people all the way over to, to East Austin from the downtown, and, uh, close to transit, you know, you're still going to be forcing them to come down to one side of town, to the other side of town, and that's concerning to me, that we might not be able to service, you know, all the clientele that we've been getting here, you know? So that's, that's another concern of mine, it's just the location it is and how far it is from downtown, and you do have to cross thirty-five, you know? So that's, that's another concern of mine.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Um, maybe, if, if possible, you can talk to the, the neighborhood. I, I thought, I think you said you hadn't had a chance yet before Thursday, and obviously we always, um, consider any, any motion by a council member on, on Thursday, including your, yours, sounds like you will make one to postpone. So, um, if staff could just please, uh, brief Councilmember Renteria, I, I too had a, we had a, a meeting, I believe it was last week, on, on, on this, and I, I imagine, maybe there was just some kind of miscommunication, and, and, and schedules, I know have been very hectic for everybody. So, um, we will see what happens by, by, by Thursday. Uh, the next item that, uh, Councilmember Renteria pulled was item fifty-eight.
Oh, yes, this is, uh, an issue that, uh, the neighborhood has been trying to work with the developer there for a while, and, um, I'm, I'm getting, I have information that they're having a very, that, that developers often aren't willing to negotiate with them on building more affordable housing on this development, you know? This whole area has been under a lot of pressure, and we have approved a lot of, uh, development there, and some of the, the developers have come and been, been, uh, has offered, uh, even fifty percent MFI on some of these units, even though there are not that many. Uh, but, you know, this area is getting gentrified so quickly, and I don't know if y'all have been driving through South Congress between that area there, but, you know, and, and I'm, uh, I'm, I'm alarmed that, you know, we're losing the ability to have affordable units in that area. You know, I'm, uh, my whole reason for joining, uh, running for city council was to, to replicate the model that we did over there at Mueller, but that was city land. But, uh, you know, we, we don't want a whole area where there's not, you know, workforce housing available for, for our people, and, and South Austin is getting to that point now, that, you know, we're building a lot of apartments down there, a huge amount, and we're not getting the affordability there that we need to, and I just don't want us make it into an exclusive area where only people that have wealth can live there. So, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned, and, and I, I urge the, uh, uh, the developer to, to really sit down and work with the neighborhood, or else I'm not going to be able to support it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? On the, uh, Councilmember Alter?
Um, it's not on that item, so if somebody else...
Councilmember Kitchen, is it on forty-three?
Uh, yeah, well, it was fifty-eight, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sir, I just wanted to say, Councilmember Renteria, I hear your, uh, concerns about that area, so just wanted to, uh, appreciate you raising that, and, um, we'll, I'll ask my staff to reach out to you, we'll be happy to offer any assistance if we can help you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I drive, that's just north of my neighborhood, and that area is really getting, um, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of new developments, so, um, I think that was all on fifty-eight. Councilmember Alter?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to flag an amendment that I'll have for, I'm not sure if it's an amendment on seventy-three or seventy-four, relates to the impact fees. It's a, a small amendment, but it addresses, um, an issue that we've talked about before, about payday lending and not wanting to encourage that. Um, and so by, as part of the street impact fees, we are trying to encourage, um, banking systems, um, in certain service areas, um, but the definition that is used in the love net includes, or may include payday lending, and so we've been working with law, um, to make sure that we won't be inadvertently encouraging payday lending by providing those institutions a break on their, their, uh, street impact fees. Um, and I will try to post that as soon as I can, but with the city being closed tomorrow, I just wanted to flag it in case I don't have it too much before Thursday. I have the thing, and I need to review it.
Okay, thank you for flagging that. That's a good flag, an amendment, likely. Uh, is there any other questions on anything on the agenda, or, or, or any comments on suggestions on what you would like to, what order you would like to take things, and I will likely be taking things in the order that we always do. We don't have executive session today, and I do not believe we have executive session Thursday either, and, and saying that's correct. So, um, Councilmember Harper-Madison?
Just real quick, I would say something along the lines of, if, uh, if there's anybody else in addition to Councilmember Alter, was questions, concerns, amendments that they're going to bring forward about impact fees, something that's been helpful for me is just asking questions from, um, professionals in that space, and it, it's clear to me that we definitely need to address it. I, I would encourage people to take that same opportunity and ask questions about, um, the impact of the impact fees, because, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's certainly something that we should be addressing.
And I've also, just, just for public sake, I think we all know, I, I believe it's just set for first reading, um, the, the, that change, so just also is that, as folks are going into Thursday, it will be just first reading, in my understanding, second will not be back, um, until the, the beginning of the, of the new year, or any further iterations. So without, I don't see any other hands, um, I would just encourage folks to wear your masks, wear your masks, please social distance. I think we're, you know, we're close, but we still need to say, keep our community as safe as possible, and so thank you for all your efforts. I'm sure many of us are feeling a little happier this week, uh, because of election results, and, um, and so I, I certainly, it's a historic moment for our, our female-majority city council, and also, I'm, I'm sure for our male colleagues who have always been incredibly supportive of us. Um, so with that, I will, if there is no objection, uh, we'll see y'all on Thursday, and we're adjourned at eleven-thirty-eight.